I'm here just to really introduce myself. I'm running for the 43rd District. So that Custer County was added back in to the 43rd District two years ago. And I share the county, the 43rd District of Custer County again. I'm 10 years without them. So I'm very pleased that Custer County is back in the 43rd District. Just a little background, and I do have some little cards that I'll leave here if you want to take one of those. But my husband and I, like I said, ranch. I have been in the cattle business my entire life, so I was born and raised south of Cody, at High School Valentine. And then my kids, we lived north of Whitman, my husband and I. And so we were actually in the Valentine High School District, which is kind of crazy. That would've been a two-hour drive. So we optioned our kids into Mullen, which was a mere one-hour drive. So we had a house in Mullen, and I did the mom routine of a Monday through Friday. I stayed in town with the kids, and Eric would come in for ballgames and such. But they are grown and gone. My three grown children. I actually had a new granddaughter on Saturday, but she was born in South Africa, so I'm not going to get to see her for a while. My oldest son's actually an attorney and does work, again, to work on anti-human trafficking issues in Durban, South Africa. So that was a start from a little country school, so I think we can all be proud of our small schools. I have a daughter in Tennessee, and then my youngest son has our retirement plan. He's not home yet, but he is down in our town running the sale barn. So that, as far as my experience in public service, you know, you guys all know because you're here and you're on a board, that when you care, you show up, and when you show up, you usually get a job. So I just kept showing up because I care about a lot of the issues that affect not just my husband and I's life, but really all of us out here, particularly in rural Nebraska. So when I came home in 1990, that was when they were really making the push to close our Class 1 school systems. I served on our little local country school for 11 years, and then my kids were the last ones to walk out of school, unfortunately. The kindergarteners out in our community now jump on a bus about a quarter after 6:00 and either go to Mullen or Hyannis. So not horribly family-friendly situation any longer, but that's just where we're at out here. When you start to learn about schools, you learn about taxes, that's inevitable. And as newlyweds back home and entering the family ranching operation, we have to start paying taxes too. So that'll wake you up in the morning. And so 1990, any of you that have served on a school board are familiar with the TIOSA, the term TIOSA, which is the state aid, that's just an acronym for, it stands, I believe, for Tax Equalization and Opportunities Act, Tax Equalization and Opportunities Education Act. So it was intended, it was passed back in 1990, and intended to equalize how the state distributed the state income and sales tax dollars to help fund our school systems. And I'm quite certain, without looking at your school budget, that probably Sergeant ended up with virtually nothing in the last 10 years, up until last year, when all the schools did get a $1,500 per student aid back, which is just a drop in the bucket for what it cost us to educate our kids. But it is a small move in the right direction. So the property tax issue, and I know we're all talking about taxes here tonight, but primarily we are in the property tax problem we're in because of those changes in the state aid formula to fund our school systems. So our rural districts primarily had to take on 100%, virtually. We still get some special ed reimbursement and some other mileage reimbursement, but as far as the bulk of our school funding has fallen, fell on the shoulders of the property taxpayers in your school districts. And so that is when we really saw those bumps in property taxes go up. So I'm pretty adamant that I think our students are just as valuable as the students in the eastern part of the state. And when we talk about equalization of state aid, that we are not getting, not getting any is not equal. And so we really have got to, and it's no small task. I do not have rose-colored glasses on. I know it's a steep hill, but I followed the TIOSA formula since 1990, so I kind of know where the bodies are buried, so it's me. And I think I'm prepared to fight that battle. As far as other experience I did, so I was a Nebraska Farm Bureau Board. That was a great experience. Custer County was in my region when I was the State Board Director. And I served eight years as a county commissioner. It was a two-hour drive up to nine county commissioner meetings. So driving is something I'm pretty accustomed to. But some people say, well, you know, even just to get elected and be in Lincoln and do the thing. And well, A, my husband and I know it too, how sort of life looks like, and I'm two hours to get to a grocery store. So that's just part of our life. You know, I would just say, I don't have to probably, we're all aware, if you've watched the news for five minutes, quite frankly, that things have become very polarized in this nation in the last few years, and even in our states, and at least in Cherry County, even at county level. And, you know, we have two options. You know, when you care about your communities and you want to show up, you can either just sort of sit home and be mad, or you can step up and try to make a difference. And it's clear that most of you in this room are difference makers. But I'm a little bit, I'm very principled, and I'm also probably a little stubborn. And so when there's a challenge, it sort of fires me up just a little bit. And we've faced challenges in rural Nebraska for a long time because we're out of it. And we're not going to get those votes back, right? When it comes to the balance of rural senators versus urban senators. So it takes a little more, I think, a little more standard in this show down there, and try to represent the needs of rural Nebraska, and be able to articulate and advocate for some of those things in a pretty strong manner. Because that's what will tell you that I'm going to probably possess those qualities. But, you know, in terms of that polarization, you know, I do, I would say this, you know, we've got to get back, and I don't know how many of you ever followed the legislature. You could've watched five minutes of it, quite frankly, last year, and seen all you needed to see. I have very little patience for sort of that whole arena down there of, you know, my feelings are hurt, and I'm offended, and that, and that, and that. You know, check your feelings at the door. I think when you walk into that legislative body, you're there to do the work for the people. It's not about you. And so we have to have adults back in the room to conduct the serious business of the state of Nebraska. And I have never had an issue with being able to separate personal from business. And so that's just, that's just what it takes. I am a conservative. I'm a principled conservative, I would say. And I use the word principled because what I've seen start to happen in this country as well is we're, we still have a two-party system, or three, or not a lot of people that don't know which one they belong in. And, you know, I would challenge, I brought this up before, that if you walk down the street and you find 100 people that said, "I'm a conservative," and then you said, "Okay, tell me three principles that you believe in that make you a conservative." I don't think 90 of those 100 people, maybe 10 of those 100 people could identify two or three principles. You know, so we talk a lot about issues, and there are a lot of issues that certainly are going to gravitate to our principles. But, you know, when it comes to principles, I believe in limited government. I believe that our system was designed for government to have a role, but to also sort of stay in their lane. We became the greatest country in the history of the world because of capitalism, because of entrepreneurship, and that was really what built this country. And the more government gets in the way, the more government gets in the way. My son is in the lead program at the moment. They did the water tour. He's 26, I believe. And he came home and goes, "Jeez, I think people were a lot smarter 100 years ago." And I said, "Um, they weren't smarter. They just didn't have to figure out how to work their way around all of the red tape and federal regulations." So if we could just have a little more freedom to do offices, I think this economy would start rocking a little bit quicker. You know, another principle that I partly believe in, that made this country different than any other country before us, is the protection of individual rights, which are the property rights. And it's not government's role to give you the rights, it's government's role to protect the rights. And so we've got to continue to be vigilant, that the rule of law protects individual rights. We are not, we are not a true democracy. It makes me really crazy when I hear, you know, Cairo, like the officials talk about our democracy, and we're a constitutional republic, and there's a huge difference. So, you know, those are just some key things, individual rights, limited government, fiscal responsibility, and quite frankly, getting government out of your way to the extent that we, you can do what you do best, which is create and do. And so those are, those are the things that I, as a county commissioner, every vote I took, I looked through that lens, and those are the same principles that I would, those principles that I would look to as a county commissioner. As a county commissioner, I guess I do have a voting history, and that history, to demonstrate fiscal responsibility, is we actually lowered our tax ask by 17%. In all fairness and transparency, we retired a jail bond, that was a huge chunk of that. But what we could've done was kept the tax ask high and figured out how to spend that money. You know, they're oftentimes, sometimes bored, they're like, "Well, everybody's used to paying it anyway, let's just keep it here and figure out where else to spend it." We didn't do that. We dropped the levy back then, the tax ask, back down to where, you know, it needed to be after that bond was paid off. And then we continued to manage that budget appropriately. Now, you can't, you can't reduce taxes wherever I understand that. There's inflation and costs of things just go up. Costs us more to do business. But I do think that we have to be, you know, when we talk about state tax relief on a state level, you know, one of the things that's not very popular to talk about, but it's just a reality, is we have to talk about controlled spending at the state level. So we can look at every unique little tax plan, you know, and there are good and bad to different variations, and where the governor's just going to end up in the next few days will know, but it's been sort of this fluid-moving target at that. But there has to be spending controls as well. And even being involved in state or county government, I will tell you, there's, you know, we found that, I mean, the bigger government gets, the more inefficient it becomes. You're probably the most efficient form of government right here at a village level. And counties are pretty efficient, I think, for the most part. But when you start getting to the state, and I can't even imagine what my inefficiencies at the federal level must look like. But, you know, there, you start looking for where we, where are we duplicating services? Or where are there things that are, have just the inefficiencies, you know, in how departments are managed? And I guarantee you that there's efficiencies to be found. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have of the, but that's kind of my background too. You know, I do think that with two, you have the term limits, you know, so if you have a maximum of eight years to go to the legislature and do something, that's a pretty short runway. So there is not a, there's not ample time to get on there and sort of figure it out, even though there's still going to be a lot to figure out. I don't want to pretend that I would know all the rules and all the ropes. But just with county, you know, with school board issues, county issues, and involvement on some state boards, I do feel like I'm prepared to kind of just hit the ground running. So with that, like I said, any questions that you might have, I'm happy to answer.
Would you be at the forum next Wednesday? Are you going to be there in Brooklyn?
Yes, I will be, yeah. So the 24th, I think it's been on the radio quite a bit, and I've been out at least a couple of counties. So that's, I think those are the best opportunities to really, like I said, when you're running for an elected position, you're interviewing for a job. So it's a good spot to see who you're looking for.
Thank you.
All right, good luck on the forums, that sounds well-taffed.
Thank you.
I've got a little box in my car, I don't need more.
Pam?
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you have your copy, so, so, if I need some?
I'm doing it for me.
I think I've said this before, when I presented, this report is 56 pages long, it looks at the same page that I had there. So I have to go over the management, management discussion and analysis, because it's kind of a recap of the whole report. So that's part of page six. The pages are letters that we have to write, and so it's, why it was qualified to do it, and that takes up the first five pages, so it's still a legal part. We have, the annual report consists of three parts, management discussion, financial analysis, financial statements, and financial statistics. Government-wide financial statements report information on all non-produsary activities of primary government. For the most part, the effect of infund activity has been removed from these statements, so transfers between funds has been removed from the statement, for the most part. Governmental activities, which normally are supported by taxes and any governmental receipts, are reported separately from business type. So we have back here two different sections in the report, and one is business type, which means it's your sewer, water, electric, and garbage. So we charge fees for those, consider their business type, and we report them on the accrual basis. The government ones that ask for tax dollars to fund them, we report on a modified cash basis, and so it's not the same type, that's why we report them separately. So the financial highlights on page seven. The city's total net position as compared to last year increased by $84,665. During the year, the city's revenues were $1,979,637, which was $73,017 more than the prior year. The disbursements of the city was $1,894,972, which was $253,103 more than the prior year. The city's general fund property tax levy rate actually went down from 0.4261 to 4.42462. So it dropped a little bit. The next page compares the 23 to 24, and the current assets are up, or I'm sorry, the current assets are down about $73,000. Is that right? I can't, I'm not adding wealth, no, $111,000, I'm sorry. And capital assets are up about $140,000. Liabilities are approximately just up $5,000, and the current liabilities in the long term are down $63,000. So you paid up $63,000 for the long-term debt. The next page actually shows the revenues compared to the prior year. And your charges for services are up $41,000. Your operating grants were up about $95,000. Your capital grants were down about $66,000. Property taxes were up about $700. Sales tax was actually at $12,000. Motor vehicle taxes, $1,600. Ranches taxes were about the same. Other state payments were $129 higher. The farm income was down $3,000. The building rent was down $500. And other general revenues were down about $800. Then the program expenses are broke down by general government, and that was up about $19,000. Public safety would be the police department, and that was down $24,000. Public works is the street department, and that's about $1,400 higher. Public health, I'm not sure, but what would the inbuilt health?
The community's, or the medical clinic.
Medical clinic is $1,000 higher. The airport was only $220 higher. Culture and recreation would be the park, pool, that kind of thing, and that was $45,000 higher. Community development was up $90,000. Capital outlay was about the same as the year before. Then when you get to the business type, the electric was up $55,000 for expenses. The water was up $33,000. The sewer was up $18,000, and sanitation was up $14,000. So as we said earlier, the change in that position is up $84,000. And if we go by fund down below, the governmental funds, the general fund is the principal operating fund of the city. The fund balance increased by $37,930 last year. The street fund increased by $58,767. Culture and recreation accounts for resources related to maintenance and operation of parks and recreational facilities. That decreased by $87,751. The airport decreased by $1,397. Communities development fund accounts for the financial resources related to economic development, community development, and housing rehab within the city. This decreased by under $14,000, the balance. The community center fund accounts for everything that happens here in the community center, and that increased by $3,535. Medical center fund increased by $44,000, $45,000. And the keto fund stayed the same because of the keto account, so they just sit there basically. Then the proprietary funds, which are the electric, water, sewer, and sanitation, electric actually increased by $43,698. The balance of the water fund decreased by $40,170. The sewer fund decreased by $35,680, and sanitation increased by $6,834 during the year. So over the course of the point to 23 this year, the cash position increased by $597,000 over the budget. So you budgeted to spend $597,000 more than you did, or you budgeted to receive $597 less than you got. But your budget, we'll look at that here in more detail. So the beginning balance, you actually, you budgeted, you have, start, you'd start out with $1.8 million, and you actually only started out with $1.7. And the total receipts you budgeted is, were $2263. You received $2321, which was $57,930 more than you budgeted. And you budgeted to spend $3164, and you actually spent $2487, which is $678,000 less than you budgeted. So you spent a lot less than you budgeted, which we always tell people to budget high in case there's some emergency thing, and you don't have to have a special budget here to amend your budget. So that's a normal thing, to spend less than you budgeted. Capital assets. The city had $4173,659 invested in capital assets. All capital expenditures are capitalized in proprietary funds. But in the governmental funds, we expense them. So unless it is like streets, combined land, if you put in a new street, something like that, then it's depreciated. But otherwise, in a governmental fund where tax dollars are being used, we expense those. So that's the difference between proprietary and governmental funds, you know, if you're capitalized. So in the governmental funds, it's been some building improvements and equipment that we capitalized. So that went up from 0.2 to 23, $195,000. In the business type, yours actually went down, and we are net of depreciation, so we depreciate it more than you purchased in the business type. Capital expenditures for the year in the governmental fund, you put a roof on the administrative building for $7,296. You did Jesse Street Drainage in the street fund for $241,933. You did the administration, another part of the administration building roof out of the street fund, and another part of the culture and recreation, so those two are not, you paid a third for each fund, so $7,296 for each one of those. And then culture and recreation bought a pool heater for $3,125, and a sprinkler system for $5,750. So the governmental funds spend on capital assets, $272,696. And then other capital expenditures during the year was airport bottom hole for $12,821. The capital expenditures within the proprietary funds, the, okay, so the electric, water, and sewer also paid for part of the roof on the admin building. So there was actually a sixth of the roof paid for by different funds. $7,296 by all six of those different funds. The electric fund also paid for a roof for the plant building for $54,225, and a bucket truck for $3,338. So that, the proprietary fund, $79,500. Then getting to debt, as of September 30, 2023, the city had bonds outstanding totaling The electric fund had $35,000, and the sewer fund still has $730,000. So that's kind of an overview of the whole thing. At the end, we do a brief report, and then we get back to, that's company 55, all the events, audit report on internal control, and we have, we have to put our findings in there. And we do this on every small entity there is, because it's just the way it is in those communities. We observe that due to limited number of personnel, there is not adequate segregation of duties to ensure internal control over categories, disbursements, and recording them transactions. So what we're saying is, you kind of have a one-man office, and in big cities, they have somebody that's payroll, somebody that does receivables, somebody that's payable, so you can't do that here. And so you just need to be aware, as a board, to do some monthly basis. The other thing we have to note, in the city, is that we do not have an internal control system designed to provide expertise to prepare financial statements, including note disclosures in accordance with the county principles generally accepted within the United States of America. So we assist you in preparing those financial statements, and that's what this is, along with our audit. And we suggest that the city council should make financial statements, including the note disclosures, to understand the relationship to the underlying data. And the note disclosures start on page, page 35, and go through page 42. And basically, they tell you how we are, I mean, what principles we use, and what the county's cash, and what the county's debt, those kind of things. So that kind of explains what we, how we come up with our numbers. So, any questions?
Thank you very much. You do a good job there. We need to approve the financial statements in the auditor's report. I move to approve the financial statement and the auditor's report for September 30, 2023.
I can, I can second.
Okay, any further discussion on council?
Okay, any further discussion among council members? Roll call.
Clayton.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Sheetz.
Yes.
And Hightower.
Yes.
Is he here for the building permit? For, is Louis, is he for the Kristen's, the Church of Christ?
Oh, probably.
Let's do marks real quick, and then we'll move on to those. Um, we'll go to number five, approve or deny the Mark Cook Building Permit, five oh four, West Main, one for thirty days and the other for a year. Tim? Roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Clayton.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Sheetz.
Yes.
Okay. We will go on to the four, the Church of Christ, a building permit for storage container, and the demo permit here, it looks like they're all, you got them together as four. Louis, are you here to talk about that, or we're just supposed to read this, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, the church. Okay, so what are we doing here? What happened to your book?
My book is in there.
Page four, it says page four, there it is, the founder.
Where are you?
Pretty observant.
It's on the empty lot between Stephen Nichols and River Crest.
Oh, okay. So I would move that we approve that storage container. Okay, any further discussion among council members?
So was that Mr. Sheetz that seconded?
Yes.
Roll call.
Clayton.
Yes.
Sheetz.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Hightower.
Okay, so the other one is to demo?
Uh huh.
I'm just gonna ask a question of our attorney. Do we need to pass a demo permit if they're gonna?
I think you have to permit to do it anyway, because that has to be sent to the.
Okay, but is it still a demo permit if they're just moving it?
If you move it?
Yes.
Well, the purpose of that is so that the city can be involved in that if there are utilities or connections.
Understood, I just mean if they move it and not tear it down, is it a different kind of permit?
Now you gotta pull it in.
Okay, but like, we had somebody that wanted to pull their camp or their trailer, trailer house out, and we, you know, we asked for something from them, just as proof that, you know, and then they were gonna have to pay if something bad happened. So I just wanna make sure it's not a demo permit if it's, if it's legally attached to the, to the, it would be. So do you think it's the same thing? Demo slash, I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, because it could, it could actually be moved.
Yes, it could actually be moved whole.
Rather than torn out.
Right, so I just.
But there are still utilities involved that will have to be.
Understood, I'm just asking if this applies in either case, or only in the case that it gets torn down.
Do we have a moving permit process?
I think it would be the same as the demo. Um, if they take it to a landfill, they need to have it inspected for asbestos, and then also the demo permit is sent to the county assessor, so that they know this, this building has been either moved or torn down and taken off the tax roll.
Okay, just as long as, just as long as they have what they need. To cover it. Yeah. Absolutely. All right, I move that we approve that. Okay, any further discussion among council members? Roll call.
We will get back to the debate, but it's being brought down.
Okay.
Hopefully, by end of May, we're still.
Awesome.
We will definitely get back to this way to something else.
Okay, thanks.
Clayton.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Sheetz.
Yes.
Do we have any more buildings to?
Well, let's just continue on on the building here.
We're, we're not even, we're, we're saving that.
Page fifteen.
Okay. Wanda Barker Building Permit for a new trailer house at three oh two South Broadway. Mike Drake and Wanda Barker, prefab or?
Yes, prefab or trailer house is what it is. Um, it's gonna be, um, two lots, or one lot, um, south of Jesse Street, and, right.
Okay, so what year is this trailer?
It says new.
It is new. We're just making sure, like, before this is approved, because we've talked about we want nicer housing in town, so I'm just. Yes, there is something about trailer houses.
But is it going out towards the river?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it's on the other side by the tower or?
It's across from the campground.
Easter, did his dad own that lot?
Yeah, right. Oh, it does say, it is marked as new, so I'm assuming that means it's actually brand new.
Yep, and it will set on block foundations.
Well, it sounds like they're gonna do a bunch of cleaning up out there too, which would be nice, so. Okay.
I'll go to the first. Do you need to do your list?
Yes.
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion among council members? I would wanna just check our books and see if there's something in there about trailer houses that we know for sure, if we've already said something about them, if we have anything in our, about not having them, or the age that they could be, if we have written any. We haven't.
We have not.
We have not, okay.
I mean, we have looked and we have not found anything.
Okay, that's, that was my question, okay. Great, all right. You did roll call, didn't you?
Not yet.
Oh, so sorry.
Um, Clayton.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Hightower.
Sheetz.
Yes.
Clayton.
Okay, so we're gonna keep moving forward, I guess. Okay, liquor license, prove or deny for the rescue on May fourth, and June eighth, and twenty-second at the community center. So the fourth is for Seener's wedding, the eighth is for Chris and Kenny, would be for the. Okay, any further discussion among council members? Roll call.
Hightower.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Clayton.
Yes.
Sheetz.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion among council members? Roll call.
Clayton.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Sheetz.
Yes.
Okay, and when were they all, are these all been due? So this is the final people that you have in this, or is it still open, or what's the?
It's still open, if.
Can we just hold on to this? Are you okay with that? Like, so I assume you're the only one that's put in for the actual manager then?
Yeah, I agree, so.
Let's just leave it open. Let's just leave it open, and then we'll come back, will, will the May meeting be soon enough?
That was my only concern, was that if I'm just moving forward, like, I wanted to start making planning for the season, we're already talking with a, um, an instructor in Carney, um, to do like the lifeguard certifications, and some more training for patient or, um, students, um, and so I was trying to do the planning of that.
Gotcha, could we just do a special meeting once we get these other applications in?
Sure.
And that way?
We don't, it's way past.
I think. What?
Approved to employees, and then if anybody else applied, you just add them.
Oh, all I meant was just leave it open and not, and then just put it off to the next meeting, but. I guess I think, my suggestion is understand what she's saying, and if nobody else has been interested, she obviously did it last year, she has the experience to do it, she put forth a lot of time, and you've taken a lot of classes for that.
Yeah, I also got my lifeguard manager certification.
Okay, that's totally fine then, I just, we don't have to. That way she can do her thing, for sure, then we can wait on the lifeguards, but she can start going forward.
Yeah, I just wanted to start with my certification, you know, putting it in for like the opening tour, hoping to maybe it could maybe open the school sooner this year.
That would be awesome.
Last year, um, as opposed to that, sheet that in the school, um, as possible.
Rather than waiting till the end of May, that'd be awesome.
If we could do that, like, in working with the city, you know, trying to get it to open as soon as possible, keep the season as long as possible, so that was like the goal, so that's why I was like, really trying to run with getting the ball ready, so that I could start planning and doing all of that.
Sounds like a great idea. Go ahead.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Her as manager?
Yes.
And?
Paige Assistant and the lifeguards that have applied so far.
Governor, so moved.
I second that.
Any further discussion among council members? Roll call.
Clayton.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Sheetz.
Yes.
Okay, and we will keep that open, like, till the end of the month, is that fair enough?
Yeah, we put out some more flyers and stuff to get more interest, because we just hadn't had lifeguard, um, applicants, and so we kinda started pushing to get more applicants, I think it just gave a bit of word out there more, um, and so I think that will have our patients, um, and then we have, I think it's in our office, like, she was in a fly, um, and possibly everyone, um, welcome.
Yeah, there was a question, um, in the range, with the, um, he just had shoulder surgery, he wouldn't be able to do it for the first month, he didn't know if he still liked, needed to put that on, like, his application. He said that he would be okay if we strictly had him in the basket room, but he didn't wanna cause, he didn't know.
We'll consider it. Yeah. You know? Thank you, ladies. Awesome, so we'll put, do you wanna put that on the city page or something, that they have to be done by the thirteenth or whatever, at the end of, is that fair? Okay, all right, thank you guys. No, it's a great idea.
And Christina has been busy with the planning committee and fundraising, so, um, we just appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna do supervisor reports, so we're ready for wage coverage? I think we've done most everything. Okay, supervisor reports?
Um, just trying to keep the city going, myself organized. Uh, we went to, Haley and I went to clerk school, I learned new things that, you know, I had not been told, or even new things as laws change. I think it was probably overwhelming for Haley, there was a lot to learn in the, the six days that we had classes. And, um, just trying to get information to everybody that's asking for stuff, for Mr. Mark Cook and daily stuff, um, have not heard from the other attorneys, we got her all that stuff for the, for the one lawsuit, and, um, Haley filled out her assessment, so she is very serious about getting an education towards becoming a certified municipal clerk. And, um, I don't know, any questions for, for me?
Yes.
Okay, and we will keep that open, like, till the end of the month? Is that fair enough?
Yep. We put out some more flyers and stuff to get more interest, because we just hadn't, hadn't have lifeguard applicants, and so we kind of started pushing to get our applicants, I think it should be a word out there more.
Okay.
And so, I think that will have our patients, uh, questions with the girls, and then we have, I think it's in our office, like, she didn't sign up. Um, and possibly everyone, um, welcome.
Yeah, there was a question, um, in the ring, with the, um, he just had shoulder surgery. He wouldn't be able to do it for the first month. He didn't know if he still like, needed to put that on, like his application. He said that he would be okay if we strictly had him in the basket room, but he didn't want to cause, he didn't know.
We'll consider it.
Yeah.
You know? Thank you, ladies.
Awesome, so, we'll put, do you want to put that on the city page or something, that they have to be done by the 30th or whatever, at the end of, is that fair? Okay, alright, thank you guys. No, it's a great idea.
It's just, it's really important, you know, communicate together, and so I just really want to.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And Christina has been busy with the planning committee and fundraising, so, um, we just appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do supervisor reports, and we're ready for wage pay? I think we've done most everything.
Okay, supervisor reports?
Um, just trying to keep the city going, myself organized. Uh, we went to, Haley and I went to clerk school. I learned new things that, you know, I had not been told, or even new things as laws change. I think it was probably overwhelming for Haley. There was a lot to learn in the, the six days that we had classes. And, um, just trying to get information to everybody that's asking for stuff, for Mr. Mark Cook and daily stuff. I've not heard from the other attorneys. We got her all that stuff for the, for the one lawsuit. And, um, Haley filled out her assessment. So she is very serious about getting an education towards becoming a certified municipal clerk. And, um, I don't know, any questions for, for me? So.
For all you do?
I love you, Glenn. So, she should have said was, I'm getting Troy organized, and answering all those questions, and getting him lined out, and how the hell you get anything done while I'm in the office? I don't know, but thanks. So, there are a few things I want to, just, you know, for, for the public to know. And I'll, instead of what our daily activities are, flushing sewers and stuff, I want to talk about the light plant for a minute, which is our largest asset. I mean, our insurance is valued at over $10 million. And in some ways, because we don't use it, and haven't really used it, uh, maybe it hasn't been. Maybe it hasn't been the asset that's been the most maintained. So, with the potential to have a capacity agreement with NPBD, we have to provide predictability and reliability with our generation. We have to, by mega-watts and capacity, and they want it all. So, all three units have to be. Sounds like I put the words in their mouth, they haven't said this, but clearly, they are gonna have to invest in some new switch gears, some new monitoring equipment, and it's gonna be substantial. And, so, we should assume that before they would invest in that, they want some reliability. So, with that said, uh, we don't owe them. We don't know how reliable and predictable they are. So, I've brought in a retired mechanic that worked for Fairbanks. So we did some testing. We fired up the units. So, not only did we fire them up, we had to put them under load, and so to do that, none of us knew how to synchronize into custard's power. So we brought in Steve Gucci from, or, used to be with Burwell, and he's just a 50-some-year veteran, just a superly, super intelligent guy. Ford also sent over their lead mechanic, Wade Swoboda, Swoboda? Uh, he spent a full day with us, kind of helping to more assess the switch gear, and also, understanding our switch gear, so that if I had to call him and I needed some help, he would understand. So, couple of things. The, some of the temperature, the RTDs, which is very suspect, pressure transducers, temperature relays, sensors. So I've ordered them, I've got them all on hand now. So, I didn't go through Fairbanks on them, because that would have costed the city. I, I was told we had to go through Fairbanks, that would have been between $15,000 and $20,000, and actually, I bought all their parts for less than a thousand bucks. And, was also told that Fairbanks had to do the work, but we're doing it. I can pull, put in RTDs, I put in a hundred of them. Pressure transducers, not a problem. We're working with a power plant compliance person, because there's some questions about our compliance, and we changed our permit from emergency use to non-emergency use. So there's some additional reporting requirements there. So, here's what it boiled down to. We've got a little work to do on our switch gear. We did some work, we actually opened up, poured a bunch of stuff out, thank God Steve Gucci was there, because we had voltage. We had some troubles adjusting voltage, right? So we've got that kind of fixed, it's working well. But, power unit number four, our four-cylinder, has a dim cylinder. I talked to Tim today about it, he said that Mike Chris once recommended that be overhauled. And it wasn't overhauled, but nobody's really needed, right? Power unit number one really can take care of the town. And so I think that was probably just decided, well, it's, we don't need it, why put the money into it, right? We'll have to put some money into it. Actually, Swoboda from Burwell can come over and help us. We need to look at all the, all the pistons, all the rings. I think we've got some broken rings. I don't have the full report from the Fairbanks mechanic, but I've got some purling wires. I don't think it's gonna, you know, at one time, full overhaul, you know, so those are, those are dual piston, so each cylinder has two pistons, right? So, means, two pistons, two sets of rings, and, so there, at one time, I was told that it's about $40,000 a hole. I don't know what it is today, I went down that path, but we've, we've got, we've made a lot of progress. Also, well, I won't get into all the big issues. We are going to Burwell for training, they're gonna fire up all their switch gear on the 17th. We're all gonna go over there about 6:00 in the morning, get some additional training there. Some new kilowatt meters we gotta put in, so that's, that's kind of it there, except for the issue with the walls. The walls are, we put that new roof on the lower part of the back, over the switch gear, but those two walls are falling out, they're gonna fall. So, we had a guy come in here, like, last week, and I just had, paired him up with Tim, and said, you guys come up with the best plan, and Tim's on board. You know, again, we don't want a five-year fix, we don't want a 10-year fix, we want a 30 to a 50-year fix on this building. And, there's only one right way to do it, and that's temporary wall, pour new walls, set the roof back down on it. So, that bid should be, that estimate should be done. But that is in dire condition. That north wall can crumble, and that whole wall can fall in, seriously. Okay, that's on the light plant. On the park, she mentioned the sprinkler system in her audit. I am meet, I talked to Dalton Cratcher, who got the bid. He, he has MX, and he's having some health issues. The other bidder on that project was, uh, Travis Collier. So Travis is gonna do that work, and they're both coming over next week. I told him that if they're not here next week, that the mayor's gonna call him, because I'm tired of getting pounded, I, I put it on you. But I said, come on, you know, this was a September deal, here we are, we're getting ready to fertilize, we're getting, you know, we gotta get the sprinklers system, so they'll be here next week. That's, that's really about all I got on the park. So, Mr. Mick, let me talk to you about the intersection down here at the Ricks, okay? Almost every day, somebody asks me about that. So there's always conflicting stories, whose responsibility. So, I met with the state guys, trying to get to the bottom, two issues. One issue is, where does their responsibility end, and where does ours begin? The other issue was the culvert, the dam down at Grins, right? Separate issue. So, what, so the new superintendent over this district is out of Stapleton. His supervisor is Brian Winkleman, out of the, a great guy, so he come up here, talked to him several times. So here's what they're telling us. That, the boil drive down, that is our responsibility, okay? What they're saying is, at the intersection of a, of, at the intersection of a city-maintained paved street, which main street is paved, and we maintain it. We're responsible for that intersection up to the white line. Outside of the intersection, they maintain it for the curb, but at paved intersections that we maintain now. They didn't send me the code, they didn't send me the statute, they didn't send me anything, but they were pretty firm in their position. So, I guess Mel, I didn't talk to you about that. Probably gonna be a thousand dollar fix, we've kind of figured out how we're gonna do it.
And what about the other side of the road?
Both, both sides. So what we're gonna do is take this patch, I got a pallet in, it's a thousand bucks a pallet, I expect we're gonna use a full pallet. I got a pallet from Chris at the camera. He said they've tried everything, that's the best that they've ever used, is what they're buying, so we got a pallet in. But we're going to pack in some crushed concrete into it, try to bring a little more structural integrity to it, I guess. We don't know, I mean, we're gonna take, we're gonna do it, it'll be dry, and we'll take the air compressor up there, and we'll, like, regular road crew.
Yeah, it's a long time coming.
Yeah, so.
Both sides of the road.
So, but even, you know, I was just up there today, there's some dampness here on the west side, I feel like it's a good time to do it yet, wetter than hell on the other side, but we will get that done, and that needs to be done.
All the way, you know, the other paved intersections too, the one that, um, right, I mean, isn't pretty much all of them?
Yeah, I was just laughing, like, can you keep going? Don't stop, just keep going.
So do I need to order some pallets?
No, but I just mean.
You're right.
It's just one of them.
Now that we know that.
Okay.
Right?
Fair enough, that, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so now we know, we don't have to wait, we're just spinning wheels.
We don't have to live with it anymore.
So I have encouraged people to call the state over that thing, because I was told that's their deal. And, so anyways, nice to come up, but now that we know it.
That's still, that's still worse, though, that, anyway.
So anyways, on the switch gears here at Grins, there is still some. There's still, it, it's just, we, we don't have a clear picture of really, the state doesn't want to do it, they don't have the full history that we have. I haven't talked to that superintendent, I really want an eye-to-eye with him, because I have the history. And their supervisor talked to the superintendent, and he said, hey, it's the owner's responsibility, that's Grins, well, they're not gonna do anything, why would they, right? They don't care that we're backing up water. I had a good discussion with Tim, he, you know, he dialed into this from the day he started with the city. So I think I've got enough, frankly, I think Tim would be the right guy. I think Tim and I should sit down with the superintendent and revisit this. So at this point, they said, well, we'll come up, pull a tire through there, clean out the block, and I'm like, well, it's just full concrete, so the tires don't make it. So at this point, we're just, we don't have a plan yet. But I know, I've been asked about that enough times, it's on my hot, hot sheet, okay? That's the roads. So, so this community center, I talked to Mel, couple of things. The rock here is getting, just needs spruced up. There's washout, river ties out there falling, we need to spend a little time here, it's one of the most beautiful buildings we have in town, and we need to spend a little time here, sprucing up. So I'm gonna get a load of this colored rock in, and we're gonna do some work on it. We're not gonna drop everything we're doing, but we're gonna take section at a time. And then what I'd like to do, like, just right across the road here, where that iso-riz between the curb and the sidewalk. Believe it or not, it's a sidewalk. Might not ever see it. Clean that off, get the gravel off, and just go in there, you know, it's mounted up in the curb, I just think it would be, just think it would be beautiful if we could go in there and take that down, take that out, lay in some industrial weed barrier, and take this red rock, sort of tie that in over here. Everybody parks over there, and then, Linda and I are trying to decide what kind of shrub or tree, I like those Japanese snowball trees, but we don't want anything that's gonna grow up too big and tall and be in our way. We'd like to spruce that. So that's part of the community center. So, I guess in the future, because I don't know how you all want updates, I think I'm gonna break it down into operating entities of the city, right? Is that okay? Is that how you want?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. So that's really, there's, you know, we have some other work to do. Demi wing up there, you know, we own that problem up here, there, in your yard, we haven't got that. Jerry Coleman's down here, we gotta get that. So there, on the water side, there's some work we gotta do. And then, next month, I'd like to do a little presentation on what, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna drop a lot on you, but one section at a time. Looking at curb status, vulnerabilities, pathway forward, short-term, long-term, and I visited with Mel some about this, was aware. But we gotta start modernizing some of, some of the way we do business, so that we're not looking for curb stops for three hours a day. So there, Larry that was here, his company does some of this, I've looked at other towns smaller than us, that have computerized GIS to their entire communities, and I, I'll show that to you next month. And if anyone wants to see it before that, come in, because I can pull up the city of Ansley and tell you every pole, every transfer, every curb stop, every meter pit, every valve we have in this town, or in that town, and it is sexy, and it is necessary. And it's gonna be a phased project over time, so, and Larry, they do some of that work. So anyways, I'm going to a seminar on this with another company later this week, but I'm really passionate about this, and this, Dad always said, pick the hill, let the wood die on, and this is the hill, I'll die on. We gotta do it, because when Tim retires, and it's Jason and I, I promise you the next people that come in behind us, we have got to modernize this for the poor schmucks that come in behind us, that we've gotta leave this in so much better hands than, than it is now, right?
People that just think differently than, you know, they've been brought up, their education has been different, their.
Absolutely, absolutely, and to them, it will just be like, literally answering their phone, that's just how savvy they'll be, and we can get, we can get there. That's all I got, thank you.
Well, before we get too wild outside, we need to do some of these steps. That liability out there, they're not even, have them come back to bite us in the ass.
What's the matter?
These steps are uneven, and I've seen three different people trip and fall to their knees, elderly people.
Okay.
I'd like to see a handicap ramp out there.
I haven't been told that, and I haven't measured it, but you're right, there is a absolute code, risers, have to be exact. If people are tripping on it, we need to do it right.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm on it tomorrow.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First I go.
No, I understand that, Troy. I understand that, exactly.
We gotta wait for Mick yet?
No, we're, we're.
Yeah, we don't need to go in slow stations.
What about this?
What's that? Oh, you're gonna go in for that?
Well, probably.
What? Thanks, girls.
Thank you. Do I have what?
Straight home. Thanks, girl.
We had a very good meeting, uh, March 21st, uh, fortunately we had a forum again, uh, there wasn't any, uh, we haven't had anything happen, except we're gonna try to, uh, get a two-year extension on the, uh, on the grant that we're, uh, received. It was a little more tiny than that, it cost a lot of money to get electricity on the site. And so we're gonna try to get, uh, some better bids on getting power to the, to the site for that ability. Other than that, then, uh, I just wanted to say that the cave went out, Corning, bringing some, uh, solid waste to go into, and anytime we can put that out there. The Burwell Transfer Station, which is literally small right now, uh, essentially, uh, is no longer operating at work. There are all kinds of work people that bring stuff to Burwell Transfer Station, so we could partly keep out, but, but, uh, here material, all that, we're all getting to the end of it. So we're trying to encourage some people on board, uh, that you, like, to, Burwell, to go east and just take their stuff right to help, that's, that's a great part of, you know, to do that. But other than that, uh, these are, I mean, that's just, they make the money, and they pay our bills, you can, uh, avoid, yeah.
How's the new hauler?
They, they are very pleased with these, with these new people, uh, it seems they're doing good at all, and, uh, it's just taking them a little time to, to get, uh. They, they are very pleased with these, with these new people. Uh, it seems to be doing what they all, uh, it's just taking them a little time to, to get, uh, to get all of the stuff in the right place and, uh, uh, they're, we seem to be, they're just, we heard. And, uh, the people in the board, some of them do come to Elba and mayors, they, they are very pleased with the haul, the price and, uh, jobs we're doing. So, oh, that's, I know, I think that, but I'm still, you know, certainly not unhappy with my board, you might go and say. Did they get up there? They don't fly. They do, they do, you know, every time, you know, gas goes up two pennies, they don't want another $10 per gallon. And we can, uh, anyway, I think that's, we'll have another meeting, we can thirsty.
Thank you, Mick.
Thank you.
What did you have? Do you have something? You said you, we don't have to go to a closed session?
I think you just read it. I don't have anything else.
Okay, can I ask, what is it? This seems kind of vague. I don't understand what, setting wages and salaries, probably setting wages and salaries.
We haven't, we discussed it last month a little bit.
It was a month ago. I'm so sorry. I don't remember anything.
And, but we discussed, I mean, it was brought up. We didn't decide anything or you guys didn't decide anything. So I just brought it, it's on the agenda for, for tonight, so.
But, yeah, you're going to refresh my memory too because I don't remember what, who or what, or we discussed, like everybody's wages or?
Every, everybody. Um. We usually did it in August, but we didn't do it in August this past year because Troy and Jason were hired, um, end of March. And so we were just going to start on that monthly March increase or whatever, revisit those wages. And so last month, we didn't get to it because it got kind of late and with, um, the Mark Cook issues, we just decided to wait till this, this meeting. So do you, you know, do you want to visit him tonight? Do you want to?
We need to go into, we need to go into, we need to go into close. No, we're not going to do this. We need to go into close.
Yeah.
Or for the, not even, not for the ordinance, but for the, um, raises, wages.
Right.
Yeah, I suppose we better do discuss.
We'll just remove that we, going to a closed session. To discuss strategy with respect to pending or threatened litigation or employee evidence by a claim or threat of litigation for employees, if being clearly necessary for the protection of the public interest.
I will move for second.
The council's going in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to pending or threatened litigation, evidenced by a claim or threat of litigation, if being clearly necessary for the protection of the public interest. Roll call.
Hightower? Clayton?
Yes.
Cheeks? Schneider?
Motion carried. We are journeying to closed session at nine 17.